We will call our meeting to order tonight. Renata, if you could do the roll call, please.
Gookin?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
English?
Here.
McEvers?
Here.
Ettinger?
Here.
Evans?
Here. Please rise for our invocation. We have Pastor Mike Slothauer for the River of Life Church tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council, for the opportunity to pray. I have a prayer request that I'll be praying for. It's for sun, so I'll pray for that as well. Father in heaven, we love you. We thank you for the beautiful place that we get to live. We've had a lot of snow. We've had a lot of rain, but it sure brings a lot of beauty. And so we thank you for the place we get to live, and we thank you for the economy that's based on tourism and different things. And so we just pray that it would stop raining, bring some sun. And I think about Solomon when asked what he would like as a leader. He asked for wisdom. And so I'm going to pray today for wisdom for our leaders. We thank you today for their service. And we just pray also for the elections that are continuing going on today, that folks would turn out and vote, and today that you would be glorified in everything we say and we do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Where do you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't believe we have any amendments to the agenda tonight. I do have a proclamation for Safe Boating Awareness Week, so I'd like to read this proclamation. And it states, "Whereas an average of 700 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the United States, and nearly 70 percent of these fatalities were caused by drowning, and whereas the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors, whereas a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets, whereas modern life jackets are more comfortable, more attractive, and more wearable than styles of years past and deserve a look by today's boating public. Now therefore, I, Steve Widmire, Mayor of the City of Coeur d'Alene, proclaim May 20th through May 26, 2017, as National Safe Boating Week." So I want to encourage everybody, as you start in the boating season, that everyone is safe out in the water.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of consent calendar as presented, including Resolution 17-033.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the consent calendar? If not, roll call, please.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Aye.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yes.
Motion carried. We're now at the public comment portion of our meeting. Anyone that wishes to address the council, or myself, would have three minutes to do so. Anyone wishing to come up and give a public comment tonight? How about any of those students? Do any of those students have anything to say for themselves?
What am I doing here?
Look how attentive they are.
It's the last time they can make the meeting and get credit.
Well, welcome to the meeting, anyway. Okay, we will move on to announcements. Any member of the city council have an announcement tonight? Dan?
Well, I would just say, last Saturday night, some of us got to share at the Fireman's Banquet and be part of that, and was very enjoyable. And I guess I really appreciated and hadn't thought of it in those terms before, but it really stressed the families. And I remember one of the themes that they talked about was that no one serves alone. And so just, you know, recognize that was a good event, and just to recognize all of the support network for our first responders, so.
Great, thank you. Anyone else have anything? I do have some appointments to committees. I would like to move for Steve Peterson and Melbourne, Mark Rogers, Brad Jordan, Kathleen Tillman, and Tom Messina be appointed to the Parking Commission, so I'd be looking for...
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We will move on to general services. We have some action that we need to take per, some action that we've previously, this says per Action May 20, 2014. So Mike must have, do you have some wisdom for us on this, Mike?
Quiz you on, so you remember that date, each one of you. Let me get a map up here for you. So you may recall, going back three years ago, the applicant Rivers Edge LLC came in and applied for annexation of the property off Seltice's triangle piece of property here that hopefully is showing up with a pointer. That is about a three and a half acre parcel that used to be the Stimson Lumber Company office site. And so council approved the annexation of that property. It had gone through Planning Commission. As with all our annexations, the annexation, once approved, is followed by an annexation agreement. And that's negotiated with the applicant. And so that languished, I'm not sure why, but it has languished up until just recently. And so the applicant has resubmitted their special use permit application, and that was approved by Planning Commission. And now they want to finalize the annexation agreement. And so that's what we have before you tonight. But the first thing, I think, is to adopt the findings from back in 2014, when this was originally annexed.
Okay, questions for Mike? Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any questions on the findings, so I'm going to jump right ahead to the annexation agreement. And what we have is a bunch of stuff that they're supposed to do that was negotiated by the city. So they're going to hook up to water, they're going to hook up to sewer, and garbage collection, they're going to do that. But there was also frontage improvements on Seltice. And they were going to do a bunch of stuff, but I guess since we're doing the Seltice Way project now, they don't have to do that. But instead, they're going to be reimbursing the city for consideration, I guess. Do I understand that correctly?
Yes. Typically, a developer would pay for improvements at their property as they develop it. This project, because Ignite is doing, in the city, are doing the frontage improvements on the Seltice Way revitalization program, they're paying us for the extra stuff that they want in their project over and above what's contained already in the Seltice Way revitalization project.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes. And I pulled the meetings from the May 20, minutes from the May 20 meeting. There was a motion to amend the annexation agreement, made by me, seconded by McEvers, that would require the applicant to put in sidewalks to be negotiated in the annexation agreement. Mr. Gridley said the sidewalks could be a condition, and discussed with the annexation agreement negotiations. Councilmember McEvers stated that there have been recent discussions regarding the requirement of sidewalks, and have planned an infill and assume adjacent development would come forward. Councilmember McEvers stated that he would be fine with a path, but felt it's worth looking at some of the non-motorized transportation for inclusion in the annexation agreement. Motion carried. I don't see that in here.
Well, I think at the time, if you go back, the Seltice revitalization project was not really on anybody's radar screen, at least not immediately. And so if you recall, that is all, seems like everything we do now is kind of a fast-track thing that came about last year, in 2016, with the design and funding for that. In 2014, yes, they were going to put in the sidewalk. In 2016, 2017, now, we're coming in as part of the project, doing bike paths, sidewalk, curb, the whole street, the whole thing.
I'm just going to pontificate here, but it seems to me like what they did was sit on this until they saw that the public was going to pay for the improvements, and now they're coming forward. So I still think they should be reimbursing us for what they would have paid for anyway, instead of what I think is gaming the system. So I will be opposing this annexation agreement, Mr. Mayor.
My comment on that, and I appreciate you bringing that up with me yesterday. I think we looked at this as the project originally went forward, the revitalization project, and there are properties all along Seltice that we said, well, are we going to charge them? They're in the county, are we going to charge them? There are some people already done, have done improvements, the U.S. Bank area. And I think that ultimately, the decision was that Ignite would fund it. And yes, they're getting, they're getting a benefit from a public investment.
Any other questions? Wood?
I'd like to move on from the findings, but to comment on Dan. Is there, if this was kicked back to them, do you think that they would see it from his perspective, that there's a payback due?
We've talked about it, and their position has been that we're not charging anybody else along that corridor for improvements, and that they shouldn't be charged for improvements that are being installed by somebody else. So you could certainly, one of your options would be to reject this, turn it back to them, and say, you want that paid for. But that's been their position.
So do you feel that that's fair on their part, that nobody else is being charged that, but originally, their original plan before the Seltice Way project came, that they were going to pay for the improvements? So no one else is being charged for the improvements along Seltice?
Right.
Okay.
And, you know, we looked at doing an LID, local improvement district, as we've done in other places. But because part of the properties are in the county, it gets complicated to work that out with the county as your LID property in the county. And so...
So Dan, when you think the way you're thinking, does that seem more fair, that nobody else is paying for it? Why should they?
I think they came to us two years ago, and we imposed a trail on them. Because you remember that the Honda dealer had to pay to put in a sidewalk, and that was unfair, and this is before the Seltice Way thing. And I think they just sat on this, waiting long enough so that they wouldn't have to do it. And you could look at that as, okay, they're being clever, they're being smart. I mean, anytime, anytime you can get away with that, yeah, whoa, more power to you. But if that was their intention, and I think it was our intention that they funded, they are paying us, and the only reason it came up in my head is because they're giving us consideration. They're paying a little bit extra for some of those things that are happening on Seltice that they would have had to pay for if Seltice didn't happen. So my question was really, well then, why aren't they going to pay for the sidewalk, the little trail in front of them, like everything else? So it's kind of like, it's a splitting line for me. And again, it kind of irks me that they would wait the two years, because it's like, you know, and we're transparent, we tell people what's going on, Seltice has been on the radar for a long time. So it just seems like, well, you know, we sit here long enough, someone else will pay for it.
Even though nobody else along Seltice is going to have to pay?
No one else played that game.
Right. Well, there's nobody else there yet. Okay.
Other questions for Mike?
Just quick. Mike, were these folks granted a special use permit for higher density based on all these improvements and what they wanted to do when they first came to us?
They were granted a special use permit to build, increase the density to build an apartment. I don't think it was dependent on particular installation, any particular improvements.
Other questions for Mike?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of the findings and order for Rivers Edge Apartments LLC annexation.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Further discussion?
I don't have any issue with the findings in order.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Looking for further council action?
I will move for, to approve Resolution 17034, approving the annexation agreement for Rivers Edge Apartments LLC for property formerly known as the Stimson Office Property.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Any further discussion on this? Roll call, please, Renata.
Miller?
Um, yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
No.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
No.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion carried. You're going to roll, Wood?
I'm rolling here. Why am I doing all the rolling here, girl, guys? Okay, Council Bill 17, move for approval of 171019, annexation and zoning designation ordinance authorizing annexation of property formerly known as Stimson Office Property to dispense with the rule and read Council Bill 17-1019 once by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just want to clarify to the students here, this is a procedural motion. Normally, when we pass an ordinance, we have to read it three times, three separate meetings, before it can be passed. So by ruling or agreeing to dispense with that rule, we can go ahead and pass it tonight, as long as no one objects to that. So that's in the state law, but it also allows us to overrule it, which is what we're doing right now.
Make a note, you guys, you will be tested on that.
Yeah.
Renata, if you would read the title, please.
Council Bill 17-1019, an ordinance annexing to and declaring to be a part of the City of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho, specifically described portions of Section 10 Township 50 North Range 4 West Boise Meridian, zoning such specifically described property hereby annexed as C17 commercial, repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing a severability clause, and providing for the publication of a summary of this ordinance and an effective date hereof.
Roll call, please.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Move, just bend the rule.
Second.
Oh, no, we just did that. Yeah, we just did that. So now we want to adopt Council Bill. So we would need a motion to adopt Council Bill 171019.
Okay, so do.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
No.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
No.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
No.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion carried. I haven't been able to vote since the porta-potties.
Whatever happened to porta-potties? I mean, it's just...
Thank you, guys.
Another big moment.
That was your big moment last time, and they don't care. I feel important today.
I needed to get that off the table for you.
Moving forward.
So Mike, we have an introduction of franchise agreement with Newmax LLC doing business at Inter, is it Intermix Networks?
Intermix.
Intermix Networks, and setting up a public hearing for June 20, 2017. Staff report by Mike.
So you might recall, a couple months ago, we renewed franchise agreements with Avista. And franchise agreements allow companies to use the public right-of-way along our streets and alleys. This is a similar type agreement, and it's similar to other franchise agreements that we have with utilities or other entities like that. This one is for telecommunications fiber optic type cable. And in exchange, as with the others, the public get, or we get a 5 percent, or payment of 5 percent of their gross revenues derived from the cable or telecommunications business. So it's basically fairly straightforward use of our permission for them to use our right-of-way in exchange for a payment.
Questions, Mike? Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mike, this just popped into my head.
Uh-oh.
Yeah. So you're going to be totally unprepared for this. I thought the state capped franchise fees at 3 percent.
Well, there's a long story to that. And so, yes, they are unless, and I'd have to pull the statute, unless by agreement or by precedent, when that statute was adopted, you were charging a higher fee. So Ron can explain it all to you, because he was on council back in the 90s when that was done. But it's something like that where we just, or Dan might even be able to explain that, was that it's, we have an anomaly, if you will, but it was, in essence, grandfathered because of, that was what, we had in existence at the time the state law was passed.
So it would really be up to us. I mean, if we wanted to charge a lower fee, we could. And it doesn't really affect Intermix, because they're just collecting it for us.
Right. Yep.
So is, I guess that would be, as I remember, I remember when that happened, and the story I was told was that the franchise fees were increased to 5 percent to help pay for the Ramsey Road redo. And then that was never really repealed at that point. I know I'm talking ancient history here. So it stayed high, and it's high for Time Warner, or whoever they are now, and Avista. And we just did Fat Beam a couple years ago, because they're new, too.
More than a couple of years, but yeah, theirs was basically the same as this.
And so this is, this is a physical thing, because I know Intermix was doing the WiMAX technology, which is wireless. So this is, this is a physical, wires on telephone poles?
Yeah, they need in certain places to have wires in the right-of-way to connect to the transmitters, their antennas.
Okay.
You know, what part of it, and I understand what you're saying about reducing the fees, part of it is, if you reduce it for one, it becomes a competitive advantage for that company. So if they're only charging three, and the others are charging five, then so we try and keep it consistent.
I understand that part. And I'm sorry, this popped into my head just too, but Troy, is, do you have an idea of what the revenue would be on this? Is there a projection on that?
We're not sure what their gross income will be from this new service.
Okay.
I don't, I think because they are primarily, as I understand it, wireless outside the city, I don't think it's going to be a, it's not going to rock your world, I don't think. But I can find more out about that.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Mike? Wood?
Mike, so this agreement is for how many years?
It's 10 years.
Didn't we just do 25 with Avista?
I might have to look at that again. Maybe we did, this is what was suggested by them, and, you know, technology is changing so rapidly that maybe they thought 10 was good enough. There's a provision, I think, for renewing it.
Thanks.
Any other questions? So we would be looking for council action?
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I believe we're supposed to be making a motion to set a hearing.
I'm sorry, I didn't, so just like we did with Avista, actually, this is an introduction, so I'd like to introduce to you the franchise, proposed franchise agreement, and then we've got to publish it in the newspaper, and then we'll have a public hearing. So right now, you've been introduced, and now if you would set a public hearing for June 20th, and then we'll, then you can adopt it.
So Ron's motion was to set the hearing, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, motion and a second, you have, you have that, Renata?
Any further discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We'll move on to Resolution Number 17035, approval of the 2017 Trails and Bike Ways Master Plan. Monty McCully has a report for us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to recommend the adoption of the 2017 update to the Trails and Bike Ways Master Plan. We, the last time it's been updated was 2010. The Coeur d'Alene Ped Bike Committee and the Parks Department has worked for the past two years to get a good update, the one that represented everybody, and had a lot more stuff in it, to really give the city what it needs. So the city's changed a lot in the past seven years, and we've done a lot. We've implemented a lot of the things that were in the 2010 plan, so we wanted to come up with a new update that would represent everything. So some of the things we've done since the last update, which I did add a plan, a page to the plan, Dan, that you'd asked for, that listed a lot of the things that we had, that we had accomplished. We'd added 8.22 miles of shared use paths, 18 miles of on-street bike lanes, a number of shared roadways, and added our first bicycle boulevard. We've added a large number of bike racks, including the artistic bike racks. We've added bike crowds, and we just recently added a bicycle repair station. The new update introduces some new standards and new facility types, such as buffered bike lanes, cycle tracks, water trails, some interesting new things. We've also included a mountain bike trail plan, and some really neat new stuff. So I have brought the executive summary with me that I can read to you if you'd like. So the new plan provides facilities, education, and encouragement for cyclists. They're important milestones for our active community to promote health, lower congestion, decrease pollution, and attract new businesses to Coeur d'Alene. The Trails and Bike Ways Master Plan suggests real solutions that work with the latest accepted standards that can be adopted and implemented for both the short-term and long-term goals of the city. This plan represents an incredible opportunity to build on existing efforts completed to date while also exploring new opportunities. Connecting the city's shared use trails facilities with a network of on-street bike lanes, bike boulevards, shared roadways, will integrate bicycling into the transportation network. The Trails and Bike Ways Master Plan also introduces new standards for bike facilities and new trail expansions that will connect major trail networks. This plan also includes design recommendations to meet pedestrian and bicycle user needs such as sidewalks, intersection treatments, bike boxes, wayfinding signage, and streetscape elements.
Any questions for Monty? Wood?
Monty, I chat, you and I chatted a little today, because I was freaking out. You wanted to put bike paths everywhere, like on Appleway in front of McDonald's, and I was trying to picture how that would ever happen, right? I talked to you about when you put the stripe on the road, or you put the bike lane, it's like, well, who's, who's, who is that for? That's for the bikes, or is that for the cars to know that that's where the bikes are?
Right. Well, and that's for both. And in some situations, like on Appleway, those are, if something great happens, we can rebuild the whole road. Those are with construction, if we get more right-of-way, or if we come up with a new solution. It's an area that needs to be addressed, but right now, we can't put a bike lane in with the current configuration. Even by narrowing lanes, it's kind of dangerous. But it's something that we put in there that if we come up with a solution, that's definitely on our radar. So bike lanes, they're, when you put them in, they're not, they're not there to give the bike rider a false insecurity, because it's really just paint on the road. What it is, it just shows the car that a bike can be there, and to watch out for them. And it also does let bikes know, hey, this is a route, because we're not going to put them somewhere where it's super dangerous, so they know that, hey, you know, this might be a decent route to take if I feel comfortable in it.
We also talked about Midtown. You said you rode Midtown.
Yeah.
Little scary.
Yeah.
Because it's, we built it for traffic calming, right? It's narrow, makes people go slow, and then all of a sudden, where's the bikes go, right?
Yeah, in a situation like that, we call that a class three or a shared roadway, where people who are really comfortable, that can take a lane and share it with a, with a car can do that. But your average bike rider probably is not going to do that. And I'm a little bit more than average, but I'm still a little nervous when it's that tight, but it's only a couple blocks before it widens out again.
Thanks.
We'll go, Dan, English.
Sure, just wondering what example of a bike boulevard, where and what that is?
Okay, so a bike boulevard is, you take a street like Young Avenue over here, that it goes, it leaves the city, or the QM Park, and it goes all the way down to 19th. It's not, doesn't have a lot of vehicular traffic on it. And the idea is to route people, find a route that people use a lot, and there's a lot of people that ride bikes or walk on Young. And then you put charros, big bike symbols with arrows on each side, on each lane, and you put up signs, you know, wayfinding signage, and sign is saying, this is a bike, you know, share the road, this is a shared roadway. So the idea for that one road is that it's equal for cars and bikes. We don't remove parking. We are going to put yield signs on the cross streets... We, we are going to put yield signs on the cross streets so that people slow down when they come across that. The idea is to share it all and to give people a route through town that doesn't take away parking on another street.
Amy.
Monty, can you give us an update on the recent workshop and then the follow-up by the Bike and Ped Committee of the comments received from the workshop?
Yeah, we, we, originally, we were going to come forward about a month ago or two months ago. And we decided to go back and have another public meeting to get more comments. We had it here in this room. Had about 50 people attend. We got about seven or eight comments. Some of them were, most of them were already implemented into the plan that we had, that they just hadn't seen. Or we'd, we'd changed it before it went out to the meeting. And that was addressing bike lanes over the freeway on Fourth Street and on Government Way. That was some of the concerns. Other concerns were water trails that they, they saw that it was in there and they wanted to meet with us to talk about how to implement water trails in a, in a really nice way like Spokane has and Middle Lane Falls has done. Others were they wanted us to get, start a registration program for bicycles. Some, some of them like that question, that goes deeper than, that goes to the state. You have to address that at a state level. And we took those, those comments back to the Ped Bike Meeting, the next Ped Bike Meeting. And we talked about which ones were already in the plan, which ones we should incorporate and which ones we couldn't. And we ended up incorporating, I think, three of the comments. Three were already in it and one we couldn't.
Thank you.
Dan. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Monty, thank you for putting in the achievements, the, the goals met. I thought that was really nice because we do need to know what you guys have accomplished and it's a lot of stuff around town. I do appreciate it. Ride a bike and so I think it's much better than it has been when you just basically had to find a side street that took you there because you didn't want to risk your life on the main street. I do have a question about some of the goals. So we have many goals in Chapter Five of the policy, which was not in our packet. So you had to go pick it up. And I just want to know what your thoughts are on accomplishing some of these things. So goal number five was to reduce the number of motorized to non-motorized accidents. I know this was an issue that John Kelly keeps bringing up because he's really concerned about, you know, where, where bikes and cars meet. Cars win. And so for the goal, it was to identify problem areas and address, correct the problems, and then educate the public by providing public service announcements and stuff. Do you have any data in the plan that shows where the, where there's a lot of motorized to motors, non-motorized accidents?
We don't have the, the crash statistics in the plan. But we do have a subcommittee from the Ped Bike Committee that meets to discuss this. We now have Sergeant Turell who comes to every Ped Bike Meeting and he brings statistics. He brings them quarterly. We're not doing them monthly. At this point, we bring them quarterly. Because as the Ped Bike Committee, we can't act on anything anyway. Our job is to review, recommend changes. And so sometimes we need more data than just monthly data. So he, he brings it quarterly. We do discuss it every month. We have, we do have intersection treatments, ideas of what you can do to help with certain intersections like Safety Islands or Refugee Islands, they call them. So we do discuss it and we do talk about ways to, to make things better and try to bring in more crosswalks and more flashing beacons and more awareness.
Also educating the public. I know this is an issue that when I was going to the Ped Bike Meetings, we were talking about people going the wrong way on the bike lanes. For some reason, they think they need to ride against traffic, which is just dumb and unsafe. So how is that working? I mean, is, have you found the magic bullet? Which I hate to use that term, but have you found the way to really communicate with the public about these safety issues?
We've tried a number of things. We've filmed a number of public service announcements. We've done radio ads. We've done flyers. We've done bike rodeos. We've gone to schools and done talks. The police department also stops people and tells them. We still see it all the time though. I think it's getting better, but you know, you'll go out there and sometimes you'll see half the people riding the wrong way. We do have some members of our Ped Bike Committee that, that are, would like to go out this summer as part of an action group and hand out these little cards. It just, it's a friendly little reminder instead of being confrontational, just saying some safety stuff, you know?
Cool.
If, if we can, instead of people yelling at each other.
Get Bike CDA in there too, to, to help promote that kind of communications.
What's that?
Get Bike CDA involved too, to help them start pushing this with, with their people because I know they're really active. So I had a general question here and I'm sorry, I just, I picked up this thing yesterday. So I was reading it today. The complete streets policy is mentioned several times. Do you remember when that was adopted?
I want to say 2010 or 2008. We have a policy that was adopted.
Couldn't find it online, which is, could be just the website, but I'm sure it's probably up there somewhere. And we're talking about apparently making that the complete streets ordinance.
That's correct.
So what, could you explain what, what the difference is between that besides just like one's powerful and one's weak? Why, why go to an ordinance?
Well, that's, that's one of the reasons. So originally, we, we wrote the policy. And we already had a lot of those design elements in our standards for the city. And the policy just kind of puts it in one spot unless the public know, hey, this is, we, we hold this stuff, you know, important. So, but there's people in certain positions that might, you know, change their mind after they look at it and say, ah, we don't want to put bike lanes there, even if they could. And so the idea was-
You're not talking the engineering department, are you?
No.
Okay.
And the idea is, is even if you have somebody who's in a position that is great with bikes, the next person might not be. So it's nice to have an ordinance in place that says, well, maybe the council should make the final decision or the mayor instead of, instead of one bottleneck at staff. And that was the idea of the ordinance, to just kind of put it into a stronger format.
Tell you, I do support that. I think that's a, a good move because a lot of this stuff, and I don't know how the rest of council is, but you know, you were talking earlier about taking some of these streets. Woody mentioned Fourth. And when I drive down Third or Government, it makes me nervous. And I don't see a lot of bikes going down there because I think it makes them nervous too. So having, having us kind of offer more input as opposed to just having someone say, yeah, let's put it in there, I think that would be pretty good. Because then you get the public a little bit more involved because it would be at a meeting. I also have a concern about, so you have another point here that's about working toward the diamond level bicycle-friendly community designation. Now, we're currently bronze.
We're silver now.
We're silver. Oh my gosh. Time passes. So we're, and I think it says bronze in here. So probably want to update that.
I think the one you grabbed off my desk was the ones I had for the meeting from a couple of months ago and I've updated it since then.
This is the updated one that got, it said draft on it. I just picked it up yesterday.
That was one from the meeting, yeah.
And I compared it with my original one. So, but it does say bronze in this one. So that's what I'm using.
What page is that on?
104.
Good to know these things. They slip by me sometimes.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I updated it. It's silver.
On the same page, you also used an incorrect word, but we can, we can, we can do editing later. So I'm sorry, writer, this thing's just stick out at me. So anyway, so diamond, is diamond above silver? Where is it?
It's the top. So we're at silver now. Our next level, our next goal is gold. And although this is a, this is a five to 10-year plan and, and platinum or diamond, diamond is probably not going to happen in the next five or 10 years. It's still a goal to shoot for. Baby steps. So the next step would be gold for us, but-
So why not just put gold in here?
We might already be at gold. We're so, we're so quick. I could if you wanted to.
My, my insistence here is just because we're, we're having a master plan and it's just, it seems to me that maybe we should just set our sights and incrementally get there. If we're in too much of a hurry to go there, I think we may rush things. And I don't want to be rushed, especially with bicycles, because bicycles are so cool. And I do get a lot of compliments on how bike-friendly the, the city is. So I wouldn't want to see us kind of over-accelerate and go a little bit faster than we really need to when we could incrementally. And you just said that we might, we might achieve gold in about five years. So just to, to maybe pull back and focus on what we can do that's really good as opposed to just kind of reaching a little bit, a little bit too far, which, and that's, and that's my philosophy. I don't know what the rest of council feels.
Dan, just a note on the, it has changed to silver.
Oh, well, see, she gets the, the updated ones and I get the ones that are on your desk.
It's on our website.
Okay, there you go. So that's cool. It's really good that it is silver. I did have some questions on the, on other items and I guess I can just meet with you and go over those things. Just basically trying to find a metric for a lot of these goals so that we can show or our future council can demonstrate how far we've progressed. Just, just like a, meeting, meeting, in Section D, meeting bicyclist needs should be a citywide objective, particularly with transportation-related departments. Establishing city policies to achieve this objective is a major part of increasing the acceptance of bicycling as a valid transportation mode. It would be good if we had a little list of what those things were. You know, and I know that's probably in here somewhere, but it'd be good if it was just, there was references, you know, continuing to improve trail projects. So where would that be in here that someone could look at and see something specific? Prioritize trail connectivity. So how? How would, how would we go about implementing that? I mean, it's one thing to say it. It's another thing to actually go through and, and say, and here's how we could see that happening. The retention plan to facilitate replacement of longtime employees and institutional knowledge. See, that's, that's just, it's there, but it doesn't really say what that process would be. And a trail maintenance program, that's cool. There should be a cost schedule associated with that too. So we know what's, that's going to cost, projected costs. And other things, monitor road drains and inlets. How? I mean, you know, what would be the, the actual procedure? Or would that be something handled by staff or by Ped Bike or input from the community? Anyway, those were just my notes on this. I do appreciate it and I, I'm really happy and proud to live in such an insanely bike-friendly community. So, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other questions? Wood?
I know this is off-subject, but water trails. I never heard water trails until you brought it up recently. So let me ask you, in a water trail, does that mean there's no boats allowed?
Oh, no, no. A water trail is, is really, it's more of a map for kayakers or paddleboarders that tell you places where you can launch and places you can go. So if you come to the lake and you want to kayak somewhere, you don't really know where it's, where there's another place to take out, you look at the map or you look at a little web app that's on a sign at the beach and you see, oh, I can go around Tubbs Hill and get out at NIC or along the river. So it's, it's more advertising routes that you can take on the water. There's no signs in the water or anything.
Okay, so, so boats are allowed on water trails and no wake? Is that part of it too?
There's no restrictions to the public. It's just, it's more of a way just to let people know where to go.
Okay, so it's not like a bike trail or a bike path?
Right.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for Monty?
Just, Monty, does this, we have some significant events here throughout the year and I didn't see or notice where this addressed any changes or in the way of signage or how the master plan addresses the interaction between tourist bicycles, tourist traffic during those major events? Is there any discussion at the committee level to incorporate anything like that?
That's a good question. We haven't discussed that. It'd be, it'd be difficult to measure, but it's, it'd probably be good to list the different events we have and to discuss things like that, show areas. I know some things are in more at the public or at the residents and at tourism like Bike Share. Or, you know, routes through neighborhoods instead of big trails that lead from place to place. But yeah, that's, that's a good question. We hadn't really thought about that.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Monty? If not, we'd be looking for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion, excuse me, I'm a little rough tonight, to approve Resolution 17-035 approving the 2017 Trails and Bike Ways Master Plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
I'd just like to thank the Bike and Ped Committee. I have the honor of being the council liaison to our Bike and Ped Committee and I have worked side by side with many of the members who have spent hours and hours working with Monty and the city staff to update this. So I just want to share my appreciation for all the hard work of the committee and you, Monty.
Thank you.
I would like to second that. I think that the Arts Committee and the Ped Bike, it's kind of an eclectic committee with a lot of different opinions. And so to be able to get all of those opinions and to put them into one plan is quite a chore. And I know you've put a lot of work into it.
Yeah, really nice job.
Any other, any other discussion? So we would need a roll call, please.
Kukin?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Oh, yeah.
Motion carried. Thank you, Monty.
Thank you.
Now we will move to Council Bill number 17-1020, approval of amendment of Municipal Code 1024020B, extending the two-hour parking time limit on Sherman Avenue between Seventh and Eighth Street. And it's the parking guru, Sam Taylor.
If at any time you want to remove that title, your honor. Thank you, council and mayor. This will be very, very quick. We have a downtown core. We've designated a certain boundary for that. We have a parking contractor, Diamond Parking, that enforces in that area. And it turns out that there is one specific block on Sherman Avenue within that core, within their contract, where we have not provided them within the city code the actual authority to enforce our two-hour time limit. That is between Seventh and Eighth Street on Sherman. And that area is a little bit more active than maybe it used to be on that side. Or I guess Senior Froggy's used to be there. So it was active and then it went not active and now it's active again. And what we're seeing is businesses that need more turnover and that's why we have time limited parking for that economic development factor, are then adjacent to businesses that don't need as much of a time limit for their employees or customers. And so that block is becoming stagnant in terms of parking. People are parking there all day. So the restaurants maybe are losing out on getting that turnover and parking. So that before you basically is a simple amendment that provides the two-hour time limited parking signs on that block. I should note that the parking code already provides staff with the authority, that is, the city engineer, to place 15-minute signs pretty much wherever he would like to within the downtown core. However, we wanted to wait to put these ones up to see what the council's thought was on time limit of parking for the two hours, which we need authority within the code to do.
Questions for Sam? Dan?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a question for Sam, but I do have a comment, which is that parking is a big issue downtown. And one of the problems that we have with parking is that occasionally the city decides to waive its own rules about parking. This was done with the McEwen Tower when it came in, the rules of the number of spaces for the business and the residence was waived so that we have a problem with the library with parking. And this, this building here, this, the one that sits at the, at the, between Seventh and Eighth, has the same issue. It doesn't have enough spaces per our code. So this is why in the future, when you hear me rant about parking downtown, it has a lot to do with our code, which is very smart and talks about the number of spaces required. But if we're going to waive those rules, then it doesn't really mean anything. So now that really has nothing to do with this here because I agree that, you know, on-street parking downtown, having employees parking there all day is not why we have parking downtown. So yeah, let's enforce it. But it probably would be less of an issue if there were more spaces behind the building for customers and such to use. So that's my rant. And the only one I'll do tonight so far.
Were you signing something that says?
We have a pool going on here. Everybody throw a dollar in.
Any other questions for Sam on, on this? If no other questions, we'll be looking for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move to-
Oh, excuse me. Dan, did you have something?
I was just going to make the motion. He was kind of complaining about how many he had to make.
Go, Dan.
I would make a motion to dispense with the rule and read Council Bill 171020 once by title.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Renata, if you would read the title, please.
Council Bill 17-1020, an ordinance amending Section 10.24.020 of the Municipal Code of the City of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho, to extend the limited-time parking spaces and zones on Sherman Avenue from Seventh Street to Eighth Street, providing for the repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for the publication of a summary and providing an effective date.
Roll call, please.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Kukin?
Yep.
Motion carried.
Motion to adopt Council Bill 171020.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Kukin?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, Sam.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, Sam. Move on to other business. Resolution number 17-036, Acceptance of the Atlas Mill Site Urban Renewal Eligibility Report, and Mike has a report for us.
If I do enough of these, I'll get better at looking that up, but... So we're here tonight for the Atlas Mill Site. Let me get a map up here. The Atlas Mill Site is the area that council has instructed us to go forward with and pursue further negotiations and investigations about acquiring for the city. In this picture, it's the, everything except this triangle piece in here, so it's, it's bounded by the yellow. Ignite CDA, the city's urban renewal agency, has undertaken over the years to do a study to see if this property is appropriate for urban renewal action or to be included within an urban renewal district. And the standard, I think, and I'll try to say this, is if it is deteriorated and deteriorating area, a deteriorated area and deteriorating. And so they've prepared a report, or a report was prepared by Panhandle Area Council that's been supplied to you, that documents the factors that they looked at to evaluate this property. And it's, the property includes, not only the property that, I've got a picture of here, but includes the property adjacent to it. So it's approximately 70 acres of property that they evaluated for appropriateness for including in either an expanded renewal, urban renewal district, or a new urban renewal district. And so what we're here tonight to do is look at their report and determine if council agrees with that report, and then instructs the urban renewal agency to proceed with studying or evaluating creating a plan for either expanding a district or creating a new district. So there are no real irreversible final action tonight regarding creation of a district. You're not creating a new district or expanding it, but it's adopting the report. And so if I can't convince you that this is a blighted area, then I'm probably in trouble. I went out there Thursday. I don't know how many of you get out there, but went out there on the Prairie Trail. This property is just west of Riverstone and took some pictures. It's an old mill site. The buildings have been removed. There are mounds of material that are mostly gravel and other materials that will probably stay on-site. Some of them may be organic materials that need to be dealt with. There's several of us going out tomorrow morning, actually, with DEQ, folks from DEQ, to take a look at, at the site, but not concerned about any big environmental problems, but it's more, what do we do with this mound of, of material here? You can see that there's indentations and holes dug where buildings were removed and other, other things happened when the mill closed down. Here's a couple other sites. I think, like I said, it's, it probably qualifies as a deteriorated or deteriorating area. It's open, it's not being developed, not being used otherwise, so... There's some pictures of the waterfront from kind of the middle of the, the middle of the property. And so one of the cool things while I was out there, and this was probably the, the last day, the sun's shown here, I think it was Thursday or something, there were a bunch of people out on the trail, and it was, it was kind of cool, and I think you'll see in one of these pictures, this little kid, and this is his grandfather, and I thought, well, that's, that's pretty cool to show that the people using the trail, and there are quite a few people out there, but you get grandpa and grandson out there going down to the river to check it out. So I think that's part of the opportunity that we've got here. Like I said, I think it meets the qualifications of a brownfield blighted area, and that's what the report says, so...
Questions for Mike? Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just a comment, and this will be my only rant of the evening. I've been looking at the...
Sign this right here.
I won!
I've been looking at this, at urban rule law for a long time, and this is a step in the process, but I think that's all it really is, because there would not be a square inch of Idaho that you could not classify under this code as deteriorated or deteriorating. So, you know, I, I know we have to move forward with this, and I support moving forward with this, but it just seems, you know, after looking at these and reading these from around the state, you know, and every single place, it's funny, this, this is legitimate. I think this is more legitimate than some of the other ones I've read, because this is an abandoned area, and it does fill a heck of a lot of the qualifications that you would find elsewhere around the country when they're doing true urban renewal and revitalizing areas that typically would never see a development ever because of all the issues. So this is pretty, pretty legit, folks, but, but I got to say, the, the code, this is just, this is a step in the process. It's a box to tick, and then we move on and do the real work, like you said, which is looking at the site and saying, okay, this needs to be fixed, this needs to be fixed. And that's, that's yet to come, and it will come, but we have to get this box checked. So there you go, my, my last rant for the evening.
And it is not a final decision. The urban renewal agency will look at the merit of formulating a plan or formulating a district. If they come up with a plan that they approve, then they'll bring it to council for approval, and so each one of those steps requires a board or council approval.
Other questions for Mike? If no other questions, we'll be looking for council action.
Move to approve Resolution 17-036, which is acceptance of the Atlas Mill Site, and beat you to it. Urban Renewal Eligibility Report.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Affirmative.
English?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Mike. Now we will move on to some action for annexation of property located north of Thomas Lane and is bordered by residences off of 22nd on the west, and residents off of Miners Loop and Sutter's Way on the east. This is per council action of February 21st of 2017, so we're looking for council action.
Motion to approve the findings in order for the annexation of property located north of Thomas Lane and is bordered by residents off of 22nd Street on the west, residents off of Miners Loop and Sutter's Way on the east.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Now, motion to approve Resolution 17-037, which is the approval of an annexation agreement with Aspen Homes and Development LLC for the property located north of Thomas Lane and is bordered by residents off of 22nd Street on the west, and residents off Minor Loop and Sutter's, Miners Loop and Sutter's Way on the east.
Second.
Same property.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Further discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yeah.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Now we're going to move to dispense with the rule and read Council Bill 17-1021 once by title only.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Any of you kids want to remind us what that means?
They're all on their phones.
Renata, if you could read the title, please.
Council Bill 17-1021, An Ordinance Annexing To and Declaring To Be A Part Of the City of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho, Specifically Described Portions Situated In The North Quarter Of Section 6 Township 50-North Range 3-West Boise Meridian. Zoning Such Specifically Described Property Hereby Annexed As R3 Residential. Repealing All Ordnances And Parts Of Ordnances In Conflict Herewith, Providing A Severability Clause, And Providing For The Publication Of A Summary Of This Ordinance And An Effective Date Hereof.
Roll call, please.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Aye.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Now, motion to adopt Council Bill 17-1021.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now we'll move on to Resolution Number 17-038, Agreement For Financing Improvements For The Four Corners Memorial Park Improvement Project With The Coeur d'Alene Urban Renewal Agency Ignite. Bill Greenwood is here for the presentation. Welcome, Bill.
Good evening. Back last December 20th, you voted to accept funding from Ignite for $1,019,000 for the project. The next day, I went to Ignite, and they decided that they would like to give us a little bit more money. So this was the original master plan that you all saw that went in for the BLM master plan. The plan that you funded were these elements less two. We, we funded the base bid, and then the next day, on the 21st of December, Ignite decided to go ahead and add these other two elements, and brought their participation up to 1.5. And so I'm here to ask for your approval of that 1.5 to do the ball field and the gazebo structure in this, these park elements.
Bill, so just two, two elements added then?
Correct. It was the, the, this was the base bid here, and we added the ball field and the picnic shelter that brought the number to there.
Okay, all right. Further questions of Bill?
Just one thing. Bill, we've been talking about some things being moved around, and I think you and I discussed things moving here and then moving...
So that's the second part of this. I was going to show you in, in a moment.
We're not there yet. Okay.
Okay.
Bill, will you remind me on the ball field, does that include the locker rooms?
I'm sorry, do you include what?
Does that include locker rooms? Or any sort of changing rooms?
That's a whole nother project.
Okay.
Ignite asked Miller Stauffer to look at the structural integrity of the grandstands, and so that's coming forward still, but that is not part of this project at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Dan?
So, Bill, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If this, if the county's going to be helping us with this, because they're going to be doing part of the parking lot...
They are doing the parking lot.
They are doing the parking lot. Now, is there any odds or anything that would cause them to back out of that?
No, I don't believe so. We are giving them, and I'll show you in the next slide, and I'll go ahead and go there because we're kind of talking about it. This was, again, the original that you all saw and approved for the, the $1,019. If you recall, I spoke with some of you some weeks back about a new design where the parking lot had morphed a little bit, and had kind of come down in here and took up too much park, park space, and we opted to go back to the original plan. Well, a few Fridays back, I spent a lot of time with the engineer and the designer, and Scott Cranston, one of our park commissioners, actually the chair, and we developed this concept. This concept I like a lot. It does allow for the rotation of the ball field, and it does bring the parking lot actually about the same spot where it was before. The way we increased this, this central flow in here was, as you can see, the sports courts used to be here. We moved them to this location, and that just allowed a lot more, I guess, centralized feel for all of the elements to be within the hub, which is the restroom shelter here and the gazebo. It brings the skate park closer, so they're, they, initially they were further out here. It kind of helps them, I think, really create more of a park central atmosphere for everyone.
Excellent. And there's going to be handicap parking spaces in there?
Correct.
Good. Because that was one of the issues, someone complained to me about one of the other parks, was, you know, that the parking lot was so far away from the, the picnic building.
Right.
And this fixes that.
Yeah, and this is real close. And the nice thing is that, I mean, you know, you can park here, this, I've tried to keep this as a drop-off, so folks, if they want to drop off their ice chests or their, or their children to, to come to the playground while they park, that's, that element's there as well.
Well, I hope it works.
Me, too. There's been a lot, a lot of time on this, and I'll just bring some attention to, to these trees. We realigned the trail, it dropped down here. All these trees that you see that are in the lighter color with the hash marks, there's about 50 of them that are being saved in this project.
Yes.
So there's 50 that will be remaining.
Bill, on, on that commuter trail, so it goes to, to River then, right?
Correct.
Where does it continue on from River on the commuter trail? Are you just back up on the street, or you just go down and connect there?
Well, that's where it terminates at this point, so north of River, we hope to tie in to the rest of the trail further towards Harbor Center. So that, that blue building, if we were able to skirt this trail along that edge, there's a piece of the trail that comes out behind that blue building, we might be able to tie into there and then take this on out towards Riverstone.
So you would continue that on in the piece between River and Hubbard?
Correct.
And then connect into the Centennial Trail?
Correct.
Excuse me. There.
Thank you.
Other questions?
So I was going to ask Dan's question. Do they get flush toilets here?
They get what?
Flush toilets?
They are the Gookin commodes.
Okay, just checking. Want to make sure we got water flowing. No outhouses.
You know, if I'm going to go, I want to be surrounded by bricks, okay? Not plastic, so, thank you.
Yes, it's a, it's a regular restroom.
Yay!
I feel much better.
You will feel much better when you have to rush over there.
Other questions for...
Okay, so I'll ask Woody's question. Is the skate park funded?
We will find out in June whether we've got the grant. We will not be able to do anything with the grant until September, so our hope was we would do that portion of the project in the spring.
Just asking.
In a year.
And the boys are okay with it.
Okay, good.
It's worth going without.
And they're having a one, one big hurrah at the end of June to have at their park to kind of say goodbye and hello to the next one.
Dan, could you let all your neighbors know that they're going to have a hurrah over there?
I think they'll find out.
So Councilman McEvers, you want to talk about your idea about the big hurrah?
Well, I was trying to figure out a way to make a part, a skate park go away with like one big boom, but then I realized that you can't blow up concrete without hurting somebody, so I'm sure the kids will come up with something though, you know? This is a big deal for them, big, big deal, and I thank you for all your work.
You know, I know there's been, there's been a lot of work done in the Steering Committee,
You know, I know there's been, there's been a lot of work done in the steering committee, and Amy was on that, and the park and rec, and Ignite has worked on, this project has been worked over.
Everybody's put a lot of time on it, yeah.
And so I think it's a great feature.
So what about timelines? You said, you said maybe next spring we'd see the skate park. How about the rest of it?
So the timeline we're looking for is, we were going to go to add to paper on the 26th of this month, and then we would come back to you on June 20th for your acceptance of that contractor that was selected. And we would be breaking ground on July 5th, and we would complete construction in 1015. It's ambitious, but I think it can be done. It's not a very complicated piece, so I think most of these things can be done. And I will remind you that one of the things we did with the project, the, the playground area will actually be just open. We are purchasing with the project a playground, and our staff will install that later. So they'll just put the curb line in, and then our, our folks will take care of the installation.
Excellent.
And we will save by doing that probably $75,000 to $100,000 in the project.
Nice.
All right, Woody? Bill, just a couple questions. So when you start tearing this up, does the ballpark go away? Can people play this summer or?
They can play up until the point then we start tearing apart. So to answer your question after July, no, they will not be playing there.
Any further questions for Bill? So we'll be looking for council action.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 17-038, agreement for financing improvements for the Four Corners Memorial Park Improvement Project with the Coeur d'Alene Urban Renewal Agency, doing business as Ignite CDA.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried. I'm going to turn the next public hearing over to our capable council president. I own a piece of property that's adjacent to this project, so I'm going to recuse myself, and we're going to let Woody run this portion of it.
Well, that's right. So I'm going to ask if there are other conflicts of interest? Otherwise, Dennis, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Get my other glasses on so I can see. All right. The applicant, Hagadon Hospitality Company, is requesting the vacation of a portion of South 23rd Street and all of East Ashton Road right-of-way. The exhibit is on the screen and out there for the folks. It is unknown when the requested right-of-way was originally dedicated to the city of Coeur d'Alene, and the Public Works Committee unanimously approved the action at its regularly scheduled meeting on April 24th, 2017, and directed staff to proceed onward for council action. And that's why we're here tonight. The vacation of the requested right-of-way would not have any financial impact on the city of Coeur d'Alene and would add approximately 48,000 square feet to the county tax roll. It could be a benefit to the municipality as tax revenue and eventual development of a portion of this site could lead to a more significant taxing entity. The proposed vacation area separates three different Hagadon Hospitality properties, restricting, restricting the property's development. After the vacation, Hagadon Hospitality intends to merge the two parcels into a single parcel that can be made, that then can, that can then be made adjacent to a third parcel. The vacation will allow for substantial building investment to be made in the merged properties, which will increase the city of Coeur d'Alene's tax base. 23rd Street and Ashton Road are low-volume roads in poor physical condition, and this vacation will help the public good by, number one, the construction of a new Ashton Road. This, this would maintain traffic circulation through the remaining portion of 23rd Street and the new Ashton Road route. And number two, replacement of a poor-conditioned Ashton Road with the construction of a new Ashton Road, complete with curb and gutter, sidewalk, and drainage. The new road will decrease city maintenance requirements. Number three, new Ashton Road will have a segment of the future Centennial Trail Route that will link Mullen Road to 23rd Street to the new Ashton Road in a safer corridor. Therefore, staff recommends to the city council to approve the vacation action per Idaho Code Section 50-1306, and to vacate the property to the applicant, Hagadon Hospitality Company. Thank you.
So I told you that wouldn't hurt you. I told you. Any questions, you guys, of Dennis on this? Geek?
I don't quite understand how this connection piece, where the Centennial Trail is going to connect to a new road. Can you just point out how that?
So, let me get to the mic. So this is the existing Ashton right here, and in the, you, you approved an agreement at last council to, for a new Ashton Road that's going right here, and the Centennial Trail will move along, I think it goes right along Coeur d'Alene Lake Drive, it'll come along the new Ashton Road down 23rd to the existing Centennial Trail on Mullen, which is further to the, the north.
So there's still about two blocks of 23rd Street?
Yeah, probably a block and a half or so, yeah.
And the widths will remain the same? The, the trail and the road will be smoothed over?
23rd will remain the same. Well, the road themselves will, but the right-of-way will be a little different. 23rd Street right-of-way will be the same.
Just thinking of those Iron Man taking that sharp corner, so now they're going to take that same sharp corner.
It'll, it'll be less sharp than it was.
Any other questions?
So-
Amy?
Thank you. Dennis, when I was looking at this, there's a lot of bicycle traffic conflict on the corner of 23rd and my mind just went-
Coeur d'Alene Lake Drive.
Coeur d'Alene Lake Drive, and this will help reduce-
Oh, absolutely.
That conflict, yeah.
Yeah, definitely less traffic there on 23rd, and, yep.
And, and also, this is going to be, we're going to be discussing it soon, which is the city taking over Coeur d'Alene Lake Drive, in which case there will probably be a very nice, separate, one of those classy bike trails that this will probably just feed right into, so it'll be doubly safe.
I don't know much about that, but I would assume there'd be a reduction in lanes. I, I don't know, but, but you're right.
Something's happening in the future that's positive.
That's right.
Anybody else?
And this is, and this is kosher, just to let people know, in case you're a student there and you're not on your phone, that if you own two pieces of property on either side of a road, we can vacate the road, and then they can kind of consume and gobble that up. But in this case, so they're going to do two, and then the third is going to come along so that all, that those two streets will be gone, and they'll be all in that one big piece of property. That was kind of a crude definition, but-
Pretty close.
Yeah.
That was very good, I thought.
That's lame and stuff.
Any other questions? Thanks, Dennis. So this is a public hearing, and I have no one signed up. So anybody out there want to talk about this? Come on up. Oh, yes. Hi, Dan.
I have one comment.
State your name for the record.
Just one added comment. We sent out seven certified mailings and zero responses came back. Just wanted to let you know that.
Anybody would like to talk? Anybody comments? Public comments? Hearing done, I'm going to close the public comment, and-
Move, move for adoption of Council Bill 17-1022.
To dispense.
To dispense with the rules first. We have to do that backwards now.
I spend the rule, yeah.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do you have to do that or just go?
Then you have to read the title.
Any discussion?
She has to read the title.
Okay, read the title.
Thank you. Council Bill 17-1022, an ordinance of the city of Coeur d'Alene vacating a portion of the public right-of-way generally described as a portion of South 23rd Street located south of Mullen and all of East Ashton Road, west of East Coeur d'Alene Lake Drive Avenue, situated in Government Lot 1, Section 19 Township 50 North, Range 3 West Boise Meridian, City of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho, repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing a severability clause and providing for the publication of summary of this ordinance and an effective date hereof. And we still needed a roll call vote on that, sorry.
Okay, no problem. Roll call?
Gookin?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Motion to adopt Council Bill 171022.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Gookin?
Aye.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, back to the mayor.
You're safe. He's safe.
Don't get too comfortable.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to recess to May 25th, 2017, at noon, right here in the community room of the library, 702 East Front Avenue, for a workshop with our beloved urban renewal agency.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We're recessed till May 25th. Thank you, everyone.
All right. Thank you.[1773.01]